Call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you for joining me, you can be seated. All right. First up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any discussions or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Next up is the consent agenda, items two through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items passing and am sleen unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Number two is approval of amendments to the March 11th, 2025 meeting. Number three is approval of claims. Number four from Board Administration, Karen James, approval of resolution for a tax suspension for DD. Number five from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions and the authorization to initiate the hiring process. Number six from Building Services, Kenny Smith, it's the approval of items to be auctioned per person, personal property disposition policy. Number seven from County Auditor, Michelle Scaff, it's the approval of liquor license for Foot, Wedge Lounge in Sloan, Iowa. And then number eight from Secondary Roads, Laura Severs, it's approved the permit to work in the right of way on 150th Street, south of Eastland Avenue. And approval of utility permit for placement of new fiber optic cable in county right of way. So with that, I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Carper, any further discussions or changes? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, brings us to items nine and 10, these are good, these are great items to present. So first is a presentation of resolution thanking and commending Mary Filer for her years of service with Woodbury County. And so we'll read that here, it says, whereas Mary Filer has capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the County Sheriff's Department for 41 years, from August 6, 1984 to April 7, 2025. Whereas a service given by Mary Filer as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by her dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of this board thanks and commands Mary Filer for her years of service to Woodbury County. And be it further resolved, that it is the wish of all those signing below that the future hold only the best for this very deserving person, Mary Filer. Be it so resolved this fourth day of February, 2025. And so Mary, do you want to come forward and? Do you want to get a picture? Come on up here. Yeah, come on up here. Yeah, come on around here and we'll get a picture together. Melissa, you want to get that? Yeah, come right up here, Mary. You get the center spot, see your day.
We're still on stage.
Well, here, we can move off forward, come on, we can move it forward. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Since we're, we'll just stay standing. Next up is a resolution thanking and commending Randy Ull for his service to Woodbury County. Whereas Randy Ull has capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the County Sheriff's Department for 38 years, from August 3, 1987 to April 30, 2025. Whereas a service given by Randy Ull as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by his dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of this board thanks and commands, excuse me, Randy Ull for his years of service to Woodbury County. And be it further resolved, that is the wish of all those signing below that the future hold only the best for this very deserving person, Randy Ull. Be it resolved this fourth day of February, 2025. Congratulations, Randy. Oh yeah, come on. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on.
Come on.
It's your day.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Go ahead, Chad.
Well, I just, I just want to take a minute and say that the, the two employees that you've had up, up in front of us have, they were, Mary, you opened the new LEC, right? Randy, did you, did you make the move from the old, the old, old building to the new building?
To this building?
Yeah, to, to that building and to this building. So they both have outlived the, the life of the previous LEC. And I really don't know that we could have accomplished all of what we accomplished the last year without these two. I thank them both for staying on through getting into that new building. Really, I mean, on one hand, I hate to lose them. On the other hand, you probably, after 41, 38 and 41 years, you, you have a well-deserved retirement. But really, the work that they put in, not just, not just the last year, but these last 38 and 41 years. I think anybody that's ever been around them know that they're both high caliber, quality people at the sheriff's office and, and just people in general, the, just the human beings that they are. We're going to miss you guys very much, but we do wish you the best and, and thank you for honoring them and giving them the recognition that they deserve, but thank both of you very much.
Want to give an opportunity, Mary or Randy, would you like to say anything or are you good? If you want to say anything, please.
Feel free.
It's been a long ride. Been a long, long ride. I had two goals I wanted to reach and that was completing 40 years. And the other one was getting into the third jail. To make three jails I've worked in, so. I've reached my goals. Now it's time to relax.
All right. Okay.
Appreciate it. I will say, things have changed over the years for sure, corrections, no doubt. I just ask that you don't forget about the guys and gals that are still working. They, they do a lot to keep everybody safe, so please don't forget about them guys and gals over there.
The professional staff worked really, really hard. They're kind of put on the back burner sometimes, but tell you what, they had a tough job. Tough job. And they shine each and every way.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Well, I'd just say if, if someone didn't know Randy, they might accuse him of using Facebook and advertising to boast about his retirement, because I have seen more posts about Randy Ull retiring from Woodbury County than I've ever seen. And we've had a lot of great employees retire from Woodbury County in my short two years on the board, but a lot of the rural folks that I'm friends with, I've, I've seen your mug shot over Facebook the last month. And so they're, they're going to miss you, and so we appreciate your service and yours too, of course. But I, I had to give you, tease you about that while I had the opportunity, so, thank you.
All right, thank you both for your service. Those are always good action items, yeah, to put forth. Up next from Planning and Zoning, item 11 from Daniel Priestley, it's approval of chairman assigning lease and maintenance agreement for a copier with access systems for the Planning and Zoning Department. Take it away, Daniel.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Yeah, you might recall last month at our budget hearing, I expressed my concerns about printing and the costs of printing, and we subsequently had a printer contract up to be approved that was later removed from the agenda. Well, we spent that time looking at a couple printer options and like to say that, give a lot of credit to our, our senior clerk, Don Norton, who kind of did a tremendous job of looking at a couple of these companies as far as printing. We kind of started with one, and it kind of was the art of negotiation where we got to the point of, one company ended up, Offer Loffler, ended up looking at 274 for unlimited printing, but then Access Systems ended up giving us 269.60 for a level of printing that involves different page counts. But then we had ran an analysis based on how much we print, and we came to the conclusion that Access Systems would be much more cost effective to us. And originally, we were looking kind of at a flat where it'd end up being over 4,000 for the year. And after kind of calculating the, this new contract, we could be around, if we keep our printing kind of under control, at the 3,235 mark when we do the math and everything. And printing, again, can be very frustrating, but it is a very essential support function of our department to supply the zoning commission and the Board of Adjustment. So we took this very serious as far as this budget season, and I can't compliment Don enough as far as kind of looking at the data, looking at the numbers and us working together as far as evaluating these companies. But one thing that I'm really happy about is Access Systems put a locked in rate for us versus kind of a percentage increase throughout the years. So we have much more stability in terms of projection, projections for this respective contract of Access Systems. And I will point out that Access Systems is, I believe, the company that serves the HR department as well.
All right, any questions about supervisors on this contract?
Thanks for your work and shopping around, trying to find the best rate. We appreciate that, the taxpayers appreciate that. I would move approval.
Second. All right, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passes five zero. All right, thank you, Daniel. Number 12 from Secondary Roads, Laura Severs, it's the approval of resolution to vacate excess county right of way near Highway 141 at Sloan. Go ahead, Laura.
Hello. All right, so, yeah, we would like to vacate some county road property that we had quite a few years ago. From 1960s, this is Highway 141 west of Sloan, was realigned in 1960. And since then, it was brought to our attention that that's still county property, county road property, and we don't need that. And furthermore, there was a building built on it, so that property owner would like to have that property put back to the original parcel that was on, so. Oh, thank you.
All right, any questions? Seems pretty straightforward.
I move approval.
Second, motion by Nelson, second by Bittenger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Laura. All right, on to number 13, Budget Review Discussion for Fiscal Year 26. First up is from myself, is just the consideration and approval of any of the fiscal year 26 improvement requests. Everyone should have saw that in the backup. So tonight, we're just going to be voting on which ones are going forward, and if they're not approved to go forward, of course, that means they, they're not approved. And so Joshua, we need to vote on each of these individual, correct? We should vote on each of these, or can we just, I think it's what we've done in years past, correct, Matthew? Joshua, do we need to, each one we vote individually?
If you're going to add it back in, because I think last week, everything was taken out, right?
Yeah, okay. All right, so with that, board members will open it up for discussion, looking at, looking at these, as you know, our, our budget situation is very, and what's the right word, Mark?
Grim.
Yeah, grim this year. And so we are looking at every ways to reduce our expenditures and thus the, whatever is not approved, does not reflect our values of our employees, you know, or, we definitely want to see our employees advance, but we're also looking at the financial impacts, so. With that, I guess we can just go through these, we can start first, I guess, at the top with from, the senior pay clerk, I believe, Dan, this is from you, right, this for community? Yeah, the senior pay clerk, pay grade four to step five. Impact is $5,178 out of rural basic. So, I mean, supervisors, I'm assuming everyone's seen the backup, look at the reasoning.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Could we get, if it's okay, could we, could we get a summation, if not a full review of where we're at?
Oh, sure. Yeah, the budget, yeah.
Just a brief summation or something like that, because we're, we're, we still have a shortfall.
Correct.
And, yeah.
Okay, yeah, Michelle, would you mind?
Looks like she's on it.
Okay, so currently, after removing all of the improvement requests last week, our Fund One deficit is $1,824,34. We do have a few things that came up at a meeting today that will be removing a, the funding for one position, however, not de-authorizing the position, which will remove another $85,000 from that. The general supplemental is in a deficit of $727,630. And again, just to define what I mean by deficit, is that's when we're only looking at the expenses and the revenue for fiscal year 26, and not taking into consideration the beginning balances of the reserves. The rural basic is in a deficit of $93,801. And in order to hold the levy constant, we had discussed moving $76,550 to a rural supplemental fund. So that brings us with a total of $2,641,865. We have $104,000 that can be removed from either the rural basic, or I'm sorry, the general basic or the basic supplemental, depending on where things fall in the end. So that can kind of be kept in the back of your minds there. We did publish the maximum levy with the improvement requests included. So the maximum amounts were the letters that were mailed out. They've been being received since probably about Saturday. And with the maximum amounts, the levy would be 7.38931 for the urban residents and 9.8824 for the rural residents.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Another thing too, just speaking of that, well, I'll give an update here later in the budget, but Vice Chairman Nelson and I had a meeting with Michelle and some others today. We were able to possibly find another for the board, another up to almost $500,000 to help with general basic to bring that deficit down, potentially, potentially. So we will know next week, we'll be looking at that further to see of that potential, 500,000, how much of that is realistic? So that's just sitting there potentially to help bring that down. So with that going into this, you know, I'll, I'll just start some discussion. You know, the, the Treasurers' Office, the increase in the fees for their fee, it's the, your fees for the state is increasing. In essence, would help pay, if we're looking at this, correct me if I'm wrong, Tina, right? You said the increased fees would actually would pay for the, if you can, you want to address that just real quick? Because as I'm looking at this, it seems to be that's the, the one area that could be covered by the increased fees from the state, right, that we were charging?
Correct, we would have increased fees. They started actually January 1st of this year. Probably the first time I didn't start with, thank you, Tina Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. So, yeah, there, there will be, we do have increased revenue that we're projecting for FY '26. And as we discussed a little bit earlier today too, is there's extra revenue for FY '25 that we talked about potentially doing a budget amendment for, because at the time that they, they, we did the budgets last year, they had not approved the legislative, the legislation. That didn't get approved until late in the legislative session last year, so we just never really did the budget. We wanted to kind of wait until we figured out what was going on, so. Yeah, our anticipation would be that those improvement requests would be covered out of that additional revenue.
Okay.
As a, and just to jog my memory from last time, so these clerks, you're moving them up because they're going to have, or your request to move them up is they've got different responsibilities and things that they're going to have to be doing as a result of this new structure?
There, there are quite, there are some other changes that have come out of the state. One of them is the, what they refer to as all county titling, which means we can title now across all county lines. Where before, it was just basically Woodbury County and the ones that were, were immediately adjacent to us. So that's increased our requirements in terms of reviewing of the legal documents that we have and then, and just verifying that, you know, we're going to have a lot more out of state licenses to deal with, out of state cars to deal with, because now instead of just dealing with our local stuff, that's Nebraska and South Dakota, we're going to be dealing with, you know, pretty much all, all areas of our, of our county. To just bring a little bit of extra clarification is, the staff, the positions that we're talking about are positions that I actually have in my department already. So it's, it's, it's a little bit harder to say, well, they're going to be doing added responsibilities from a department perspective. The issue is, is that we're going to have more coming through the department, so we need more people to do those levels of duties.
Sure, yeah.
So I think that's sometimes what gets lost in it, is because I already have those, the clerk threes and the, and the senior clerk, I already have some people doing that work already. It's just, this is going to increase based on some of the requirements that change.
No, that was my understanding, I just wanted to make sure that I had gotten it right.
Yep.
So I'm, you and I are on the same, same page there, so.
Thank you.
And so any board members, you know, feel free to ask any of our department heads here, elected officials with any of these requests, you know, any questions, that's why they're here. Thank you for coming today, you know, department heads and elected officials and representatives, thank you for being here during this time, before the snow hits and. So overall, like we've said, I know we've talked about, we are facing some grim finances and we're looking at where can we improve, where do we need to hold the line on?
Yeah, we just don't have the, the capability to take on much more, because anything we approve tonight is a cut that we're going to have to, or we're going to have to make up somewhere else, especially in, in the general basic. And then I think we have to look at where we can get revenue, because that's the other half of the equation, right? You've got expenses, you've got revenue. And so with the Treasurers' Department, with this, with the new fees, that's going to be some good revenue for the county. We haven't got too optimistic or too crazy with the numbers, but it could be a lot better than what we've even plugged into the budget. And the total for this request looks like it's going to be around 30 to 32,000 for these. But if these people don't, if we don't upgrade them, we're not going to be able to handle this, these titles, so then the fees or the income, the revenue goes out the window. So to me, that's kind of a no-brainer, but.
Wendy, I saw you that year, can you have a question?
I guess I wasn't sure, do you just want us to?
Yeah, no, no, yeah, we'll call you up, yes, as we have questions, as needed, yeah, yeah. There's no need to re-present again, you guys did a great job the first time presenting, so.
Okay.
My question is, for your position, if this wasn't to get approved, what does that look like for you? Is that, is that a hindrance in services or what's?
You know, it's, Wendy has Communication Center Director, so turnover has been a challenge for us since probably about 2022. We've been just thinking we can plug along, and we are just beyond a breaking point. For years, we, we didn't hire anyone, I, I looked at some numbers today. In 2021, we didn't have a single new hire. In 2022, we had five. In 2023, we had four. And in 2024, we, we, calendar year, we hired nine new people. Our tenured employees are starting to retire, so we're not only having retirements in addition to additional turnover, but our people are just spread way too thin. Those of you that, you know, Chairman Bittenger and Board Member Ong sit on the WIT Commission, so they definitely, you guys definitely hear our experiences on a much more regular basis, monthly, but we're training people constantly. We need somebody who's dedicated to training these people. I'm not sure everybody understands what our department does, but we're the single answering point for both non-emergency, emergency calls in all of Woodbury County. We also have a contract with North Sioux City. We provide services to them, what they pay us offsets what, what the city and county pay. So the city and county have a 2080 agreement that establishes the Communication Center and also establishes the IT department. And so that's where those percentage of fees are set up. Sergeant Bluff also has a 2080 agreement, and they pay a portion. You know, we don't really have the ability as a department to create any revenue. But I guess at some point, you know, it's always been assumed that the county absorbs the workload of the populations of the rest of the communities, you know? Should Mowville be paying a piece? Should, you know, those are, I mean, those are the only things that can cross my mind as to a way to generate revenue. But we're really just moving the buck then, you know, is it really, you know, you know, somebody else's problem? So when Glenn retired, I don't know how many of you were around, but Glenn was the former director. When he retired, I was promoted, and then Travis Cipperly here was promoted. But we also did a reorganization then. Travis's position is 50% funded by Starcom. So that saved our department budget some money, because 50% of his salary is paying at a Starcom. And then all those Starcom user, user agencies are paying for a piece of his salary. But then it's like, we lost half a person in our department, because Starcom is a full-time job. And, you know, he spends half of his time doing it, but it's, staffing has been a challenge, and we need some help. And, you know, this, I think, is what will help, you know? So, you know, our, our staff, they're spread thin, they, I, you know?
Sure.
They, I think it's hard for you guys to imagine the, the calls that they take, the emotional toll it takes on them, you know? An officer on the streets dealing with one single incident, what's going on right then? The dispatchers in the center are dealing with every single incident. You know, we might have something big going on, and they're dealing with that, but the phone doesn't stop ringing. There's things going on constantly at the same time, all the time, and I don't think everybody understands that, you know? We tell people how to do CPR, we tell people, you know, how to administer Narcan on overdoses, just, you know, the job is complicated, takes a special person to do it. Not everyone is successful. We've had to let people go during the training and have said to me, this is the hardest job I have ever done in my life. And we need somebody that organizes that training, makes sure that it's consistent for all of our employees. You know, I don't know what else to do, kicking this down the road isn't going to help. And I know the legislator has, legislature has put us all in a difficult position. I did, on my own, figure out how to save the board about $20,000 on the Starcom side by deciding to use revenue that we didn't, or, you know, budget overruns that we didn't use the last few years. So I hope that you would take that into consideration. Adding this position, because the county pays a little less than 30%, is, you know, less than $30,000. So I think it's money well-spent for the board. You know, you won't see me much, I don't come asking you guys for stuff, because we just, we are a department that just gets things done, and we just, you know, grind it out and keep doing what we're doing, but. I don't know what else to say.
Mr. Chair, just so that you know, this. Mr. Chair, just so that you know, this improvement request was not taken out of the budget. I, my understanding was the improvement requests that were county-funded, and since this is 30% county, I did not remove this from the funds.
Okay.
So...
So it's in the projections currently?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will add, this unanimously passed the Sioux City City Council, which is pretty amazing, that they all 100% supported it. So, you know, it's, it, that spoke loudly to me, so.
Okay. Who's doing the training now?
So we have people, just other full-time operators.
More senior people?
Yeah, not necessarily all more, they've been there long enough to know the job, but they get so tired of doing the training, because it's, you know, it's constant, you know? Usually, we divide the new people between shifts, so there's one person training on each shift, but then also, we have to move people around a little, just because there's times that sometimes second shift honestly is so busy, that it's hard to get valuable training, because there's not an opportunity to stop and explain we, how we do things, because it is just so constantly busy. So, they do get, it's kind of like a shift differential, when they're actively training, they do get, it's part of their contract, is it 50 cents an hour? I can't remember. Okay. So they do get compensated for that, but it's very little, and it's, you know, hard to, to keep on doing it. So, having somebody, and obviously, the training person couldn't do 100% of the training, because, you know, most likely, we would have more than one new hire at a time, but if we did only have one, they would definitely be tasked with doing a lot of it, so.
Sure, okay.
All right, I think that's all, as much as I have. Thank you, Wendy.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, just to piggyback up on, on what Wendy said, I get to listen to a lot of the tragic 911 calls that come through, and I think she hit the nail on the head, that when, you know, we get to be the knights in shining armor sometimes, or we get to be the bad guy, or whatever the case is, but without them answering the phone, we don't get to where the people need the help. The fire departments don't get there. And we, we get to see the end, good, bad, or ugly, we get to see it through. Unfortunately, what I've learned over the years is, they don't ever get to see the end, good, bad, or ugly. They just are right on to the next call that comes in, and it never stops. So, I mean, if, you know, look, yeah, I'm gonna come up here and I'm gonna lobby for maybe one of our things, maybe both of them. I'm gonna give you back $650,000, because we're gonna take the, the eight correctional officers off the table to help with the budget, but this is one thing that I would strongly encourage you to, to, to do, to help the comm center. It's been, they have really been getting their butt kicked, and i- if this is, this will be $30,000 very well spent for everybody in Woodbury County. So, I just wanna make sure that I let you know that.
That's good, that's good. Thank you, guys.
Michelle, we can pay for that out of any fund? Is that why that's blank, or?
This is a transfer that we make from the general fund, and I did not remove it from the improvement request. It's included in the totals. I, I, I guess I was under the understanding that we were removing fully funded county positions.
I just have a quick question. So with the, all the improvement requests, the equipment and the personnel, what is the total that we're looking at today?
The equipment is not an improvement request, so those were not removed from the, those would be CIP requests.
CIPs, okay, so, but we're gonna relook at those again today, the CIPs as well?
No, that's not till later, a couple months from now, yeah.
Okay. So what is the total of all the improvement requests then, that we're looking at? I mean, I don't know if anybody had it right offhand, sorry. I didn't know if we're looking at, do we need to get to a certain number, or we're just trying to keep it as low as possible?
There's no number we have to get to. It's just looking at, on an individual basis, in case by case of what can we, as soon as afford, what's critical for now.
Okay, all right.
And once again, once again, you know, hope our employees know, you know?
I'll add that best we're going along.
I can give you the totals per fund, and it's gonna, you know, vary by the fund. So, we have $373.39 in the general fund.
Well, that's not much.
Three.
One more? 131, 321. No comment? Rural Basic, 5,178, and that, that would be the, all of them that were removed last week. The sheriff did volunteer to remove four of his in the reductions that we did a couple weekends ago.
Can I ask anyone else how, or if it's you, Dr. Scaff, that might know how probable this up-to-half-million-dollar benefit will be to general basic?
The half-a-million dollars is, I believe, proposed to be things that we find that were not budgeted, or were not used in the fiscal year 25 budget. So that will affect the beginning balance of the reserves, and the deficit will remain the same with the, comparing the expenses versus the revenues for fiscal year 26. But if our beginning balance is more, that means our any balance will be more by that amount. So we may be able to still be at the 16% level by approving some of these things, taking that into account.
Good question.
Okay, so basically, that would, that would make our shortfall in general basic a little over 1.3 without, because these efficiencies would be funded by reserves?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I mean, I'll, so yeah, we just need to make motions on which ones we're gonna approve. I'll, I mean, I'll make, I'll make the first one. I would say for the treasures, I think that one, I would, we can pay for that since it's covered by the fees. I think that's a, that one's not gonna hurt our, hurt the reserves and/or having tax on that. So I would, I would move to, to approve the treasures improvement requests, as stated in the backup.
All seven of them, right, one, two?
Yes, one, two, three, yeah. So I'll move to approve all seven of the treasures improvement requests.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, yeah?
And we believe this will be recouped in one fiscal year?
Tina, do you wanna answer that one?
I'm sorry, can you restate that?
Do we believe this will be recouped in a fiscal year? The, the cost of this improvement request, will it result in revenue that exceeds the, the cost?
Yes, yes. I mean, some of the thing with the any-county titling that I would have a concern with is if we're not keeping up on it, that work will go outside of our county, and the revenue will go with it. So, it's going to be important that we can keep up on it, and at this point, we're seeing the projected revenues, and then, you know, is there the opportunity that we'll get more titles from other counties? Yes.
And is that increase reflected in this figure being worked on already, or is it in addition to that?
Well, I had, I had put in the additional revenue, for FY twenty six, I put the additional revenue in, and then at the last pass of asking for some expense, trying to get the budgets down by about 2% to 3%, I had real numbers that I was able to work with. So I've, so I was able to identify that that first pass was a little bit lower than anticipated. We, we actually have another correction going through the legislature right now, because they had a miscalculation on some of those fees, so they're actually, what we've actually received so far is lower than what it should be. So we're expecting that, because it is funnel-proof at this point. But even with that, we have, we're having more revenue this year that was not budgeted as well. So I mean, there's some parts of it that says that, you know, I'm gonna have more revenue at the end of FY twenty five that's going to be far in excess. The additional revenue for FY twenty five is probably three years' worth of this request.
Okay.
Thank you, Tina. That's, that's good information. Okay. All right, so with this first one moved by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any other questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes 5-0. I'm gonna move to receive. We've got an updated request from Veterans Affairs, just some updated information, so I'll move to receive.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Give that to Michelle. All right, so let's continue on, and with that, I'd say, let's, you guys wanna look at that and... Chad, do you have anything? I mean, I know we're, whether they're looking at anything you wanna say about yours, or anything updates, or for your, your, I know you've already taken four off, and then I know you've talked.
Captain Peterson or Lieutenant Hendrickson come up, but, so just so I'm clear, on this improvement request, does this include the replacement for the tablets? No.
No, this is only personnel changes.
This is only personnel, so we're talking the, the four correctional officers.
Correct.
So, I mean, a- as I said, if we, if budgets are tough, and I understand, I've looked at the numbers, ideally, we would like to get them, okay? If we have to delay it for a year and reshuffle some things in our budget, I understand that. We certainly wanna be good stewards of, of the taxpayers' money. You all have, as, as you've heard me say in years past, you have the hard job to decide those money questions. It's, you know, but will we utilize the four people? Absolutely. Will they assist us in dealing with the federal inmates? Absolutely. But you'll make the decision, and if, if the decision is that you can't do it, we will certainly persevere and keep moving on, and we'll, if we have to reshuffle some things, we will. But I, I don't want you to think that we don't need them or want them, because we do. I wouldn't have put them on there if we didn't really need them, but under the circumstances, I have to at least acknowledge and understand the situation that, that the county's in. So, as it relates to those four positions that are still on there, I'm gonna leave that entirely up to the board to make that decision. If, if, if they're approved, we will utilize them. They will be assigned as federal transport officers. If they're not, then that would mean that the eight that we were counting on to get those numbers as up to that 150 mark, we're gonna have to do some juggling and figure some things out. It's just would be important for the public to understand that if we have to do some juggling, that means that other services that we're currently providing may drop off, so that we can move people in different positions. So as, as we discussed, well, two of us discussed, you know, the three of us discussed earlier, there's if this, then that, right? And so if this doesn't get approved, there may be other services that are affected in the sheriff's office as we try to juggle things to keep the jail fully functioning.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Did that answer?
Oh, yeah, yeah, just one, yeah, just...
Yeah, I know you're up to speed. This is more for the general public, I guess, or any, any other questions?
Quick question. Where do your vacancies stand at the moment, as far as?
Uh, how many? We're six down right now.
Okay.
And so I think yesterday, we, we looked, and we're, we are 100, was it 128,000 to the good, because of the vacancies that we've had in the jail throughout the years. So we, we're gonna have...
Just in the payroll?
Just in wages, not, not wages plus benefits. It was just wages. And that number will not go down. It can only go up for every, every day that we're, those vacancies aren't filled. So.
Okay. No, we appreciate you here, being, you know, working and being flexible, you know, we, we appreciate that, yeah.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate all the elected officials and our, you know, your department heads. You guys are very financially wise and steward the money well, and, you know, I appreciate you understanding and, you know, working with us.
But I wanna piggyback off of what Chad just said, this than that. And so, the Board of Supervisors in years past have listened to constituents, and then have funded services, staff, departments that constituents wanted. And what has changed is the state is now saying, no, you don't get to dictate that anymore. We're only gonna give you a set amount of money, and then you're gonna have to kind of fight over what, what this than that.
Well, they're not, they're not giving you any money.
Well, no, they're not.
They're, they're, they're dictating what money you can get from the taxpayers. Be, be, just, just to clarify, the state's not giving you a dime. They're not giving you the money. They're only limiting what, what the elected representatives of the people, they're taking that power away from you.
And what's unfortunate is that we've run so lean with, without any extra fluff, as far as services, manpower, et cetera, that now, there's just not, there's just no wiggle room. And I'm, I'm just really concerned about, I, I don't want anybody to take personal, if we approve requests or not, it's, it's not. You know, we just, these are the constraints that we're having to deal with, and I think there's gonna be disappointed citizens in what we have to do, but that's, we have no choice, so.
Well...
But thank you for your...
The state, the state representatives that are out there, the public is concerned about it, they should reach out to them and let them know and voice their concerns, because the truth is, what the state's doing is going to force counties across the state of Iowa to have to cut services. That's, so while they, while they sit in Des Moines, okay, and, and think that they're righteous, and, and that they may have well-intended intentions, or not, I'm not sure which it is, I haven't talked to them yet. It's probably best that I don't. They can sit, you know, 180 miles away and take away the authority and the power from the duly-elected local officials, and the, the people that are gonna be most negatively affected are the rural folks.
Right.
And, and that's unfortunate, because the, you know, 85% of our population's in the city, and if you add in Sergeant Bluff or Mowville, it's even more than that. So they're still gonna have police departments, fire departments, and everything else, but it's the rural folks who are gonna be directly affected by it. So, I just think it's very important that the, that they understand that, and I also, I don't, I live in Woodbury County. I don't want my taxes raised for no good reason, right? But at some point, because of the restrictions, it's either, there's going to have to be, something's gonna have to bend or break, or services are gonna be cut. And I think the pub, we need to be very honest with the public and let them know that that's what's coming down the pipe. And if that doesn't sit well with them, pick up the phone or send an email to your representative that's down in Des Moines, because pretty soon, you guys aren't gonna have much of a say in it, which goes against, it goes against what I thought we were all for, was local control.
Correct.
But apparently, some have forgotten or wanna talk out of both sides of their mouth.
Thanks, Chad.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So we're, we're talking about some ongoing expenses here, which is important, because I think some of the pending legislation involves a, a 2%
Correct, yep.
Uh, revenue growth allowance, which means the state is saying 2% is basically inflation if you're not going to do anything to services. It's nice if they could just declare that, that that's what federal inflation is. But obviously, a lot of the costs that our departments have are not the same basket of goods that a consumer has. You know, when we went through the jail, we're still in the jail thing, people will say, my household does this, my household can do that. Well, your household probably doesn't have fuel, is a huge expense, like patrol or secondary roads. Anyway, I know, I think you went to Des Moines recently to speak to legislators.
Yep.
How successful was that?
Okay, yeah, I was gonna give an update in the board...
Because this, these decisions we make, we can't fund this through reserves. We have to.
Correct. Right, yeah, so I was gonna give it up, yeah, update, no, I'll give it now. Talking last week to our legislators, most are, are, are fine with House File 718. I think it needs to, needs to do more, and there's that new... And there's that new property tax reform, and I know Michelle and Mark and I were talking today about how, I think it's, and I agree with you guys, it's gonna go, it's gonna go through, and some legislators are talking about this reform, this 2% going into effect. And then it seems like there will not, they are not backing down from, from controlling Des Moines and putting caps on us, on our growth, and so I, I am concerned with that, that, that there's a federalization at the, at the state level over the local county government, so I would... No, none of them, none of them, I would say that I spoke to, like I said, it's very, they were not concerned about what the supervisor have said. They did note that supervisors in ISAC or Supervisor affiliate has raised the concern that we're against this and what's happening. But it did not seem to move the needle or to be like, oh, we need to reverse course. I did, did meet some, an retired auditor down there and a county assessor, and they, they're lobbying on behalf of the supervisors, actually, on behalf of the local county governments, and they're concerned, and I mean, they, they see what's coming down the railroad, the proverbial railroad, what's coming to us. And so, so I don't have good news. No one.
Yeah, to add on to that, Matthew, I would say-
It's not good news.
All the op-ed pieces I've seen, or, you know, legislative newsletters that I've read, or just visiting with people that are down at the Capitol, or they're, they're on, they're at war with property tax. I mean, they are. It is, they are at war with property tax. And, and that's what has me really bearish looking out to next year, is because if we're dealing with a 2% cut or even worse, what we're dealing with this year will be easy compared to next year.
And one thing I did hear is, is some of the legislators were talking about, oh, some of these counties have got inflated budgets, or they've got massive reserves, or... And I, and, and I, I told them, I'm like, well, Woodbury County is right or wrong. We've stayed lean, kept the levies the same, right or wrong. We were trying to, you know, trying to be very, what do we need, and let's keep it there. And I think they are not realizing what, that we are going first in the painful process of being hammered by these laws that are coming online. And so, and that didn't seem to necessarily faze anyone, or they were like, well, this is the law, it's what we're doing, so. So, I don't know. The next step is that maybe we all run for senate. I don't know. That's, I mean, that's the only thing I can think of, how to.
So, aside from our former supervisor, Rocky, what do we, did you sense any inroads with the delegation on any point?
Not really, no.
Did you ask, I mean, ask them to reconsider?
Some, I was able to get that question in, and they said that it would be impossible, in their opinion, to probably get it to a Florida reconsider, House File 718 or the property tax reform. They said it's, it's almost the, the ship has sailed on that. Some, some I talked to were not from our Northwest delegation, and they're not willing to go to war with that in the senate or the house or to bring that up, so. So, some, I guess, to answer your question, we're kinda on our own.
I hereby request unanimous consent to make motions on behalf of our area legislators.
Yeah, so, yeah. I don't, yeah, I don't have good news. Sorry, guys.
Motion by Bossman, second by... We can publish that.
Maybe we can.
Accurately reflect where these decisions are being made.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, that, well, that was, yeah, that's my update, yeah. Well, let's keep, we'll keep moving on our business here. Let's look at here, let's just, I guess, let's look at this, this E-911 position, since it was in there.
Yeah, I think since it's already plugged in, and it's, I do think it's a warranted issue, and it's, I think it was Wendy that said that every, or maybe it was Chad, that every person in the county uses this, more so even relies on it. So, I would move, well, I guess we don't have to do anything, 'cause it's already kept in, so we can just, it'd be just to take it out, so. I'm, I'm fine leaving it in there.
Okay, alright, alright.
Brought all these people.
Oh, yeah? You're more than welcome, yes. You got a monologue, a silique, a dance, we don't care. We can say something, I mean, you know. Alright, thank you, yeah, thank you for coming.
You know, it's tough, so you got, Chad was up here talking about the jailers, correctional officers, which is something that, that, you know, we need the revenue from the jail, and I think that unfortunately, with the way this is stacked against us now, we're gonna have to, our guys out there are gonna have to try to bend over backwards, try to get the revenue up, so then if we got the revenue, we can give them the extra help, which is opposite of what we would like to do. But then I look, you know, I'm liaison out here to our paramedics, and we've got requests here, and, you know, this is not a required service by state code, and I promise you, if you go out and talk to any of our volunteer firefighter EMS in any of our towns or any of our rural residents, they don't see it that way.
Correct.
So, are all these requests deserving? 100%, 100%. And I, can we afford to do anything tonight? I don't think we can.
No.
And it's disappointing. We've got good people out there, and I hope they don't go anywhere, and they're underpaid as it is. But I just, you know, it's, it sucks.
Right.
And the other part of it too is they've got a truck that's in the CIP request that's got 200,000 mile, 180,000 miles on 190,000 miles that they use every day. And, you know, we've had some other departments delay vehicle replacement. I don't think that's one that we can do, you know? And so, I hate to think we upgrade a truck and don't have guys to drive it, but that might be the risk that we have to take this year. So.
Alright, I think, I mean, for myself, looking at this with the rest of the CIPs, I mean, I think we're gonna have to hold off on, on them. The only thing to look at is the sheriff's, not CIP, excuse me, I'm sorry, improvement requests. I think for the sheriff, that's the only thing, probably the only one we can talk about is, I mean, out of the four that are on there, do we do? Do we have a board? Do we wanna hold off on the four? Do one? I appreciate you, Chad, being willing to work things around and, you know, appreciate the deputies that are here and those that aren't here. Thank you for your being service-willing to be flexible this year if we do have to wait, so the board says thank you for that. We know. But I mean, I don't know what you guys are thinking, I mean, to me, my opinion's the only other one that we could potentially look at, but even there, I was, I would say maybe we should just hold off.
That's something we could add.
True.
Right back, right, you know, and that would be one that I would go after right away. If it's the difference between 100, 150 inmates, or 125, 150, if that revenue's there, that's something that we could act on quickly. If, you know, we get some more back in reserves, or if we've got more revenue than we think from prisoners, you know, we can... What's presented here tonight, it's not like we can't ever come back in the next
Correct.
Year and do something different. It's just that right now, we gotta try to get this general basic even, and then go from there.
Right, okay.
That's how I see it.
Any thoughts on the board members?
Yeah, and I would agree with that as well. I mean, I think hopefully it'd be something we could look at quickly, like if, hey, we really need to ramp that up, you know, and we come right back and, and look at it. It's unfortunate. I wish, you know, yeah, we could do it, but it's, and as I'm looking at it right now, it looks like we basically, 'cause that 30,000 for the E-911 was already in there, basically looking at 32,000 for the treasurer, roughly, for the treasurer's office.
Okay, so I guess hearing from the board's settlement is we'll probably hold off on the, on the jailers, and the rest we'll just... Unless anyone wants to make a motion for any of them. Yeah, Dan, come on forward.
I just wanna say, as far as the clerk position, I, I fully appreciate the, the position that you're in. And I don't wanna go make an excuse that, hey, we're a small department, but we're, we're definitely a department that does a lot of significant work as far as the zoning aspects, and since I fell under the role when Mr. Glaser had left, a lot was kinda falling on all of us, Don and myself, as far as the operation of the department. And when I, when I pled last month, I talked about kinda my philosophy as far as the differences between high-performance organizations and kinda the Jim Collins theory, where you have to, you know, make those tough decisions, get the right people on the bus. And I, I'm fully looking through, I remember my first day in graduate school, they said, you're being trained to be a bureaucrat. You will face this someday in your career when you're on a respective budget crunch, and, you know, we know that happens. It's very regular. But when I look at the high-performance organization, and I look at the, directly the quality of people, and one of the things that, when I look at it through the lens of government, we know government, you can get into management so easy. You're managing a situation, you're going through this, and I always subscribe to, the professor one time said, leadership is something that cannot be taught. It must be caught. You must catch on to respective elements of leadership. And a lot of times in government, it's tough to find an entrepreneurial spirit within departments and organizations. And sometimes when you find that spirit, you really identify it with, when, when you love what you do, that you're, you're finding quality out of the aspects of serving the community and serving the public and everything. And looking back at my time working and watching how the, the clerk positions actually do feed into the overall aspect of the department, it's quite amazing. And looking in the last month, like I told you at an earlier agenda item, our clerk saved us money as far as of the printing. And looking at the aspect of, wow, we, we went through a victory, 'cause we compared prices and we found a way to, to bring the budget down. And I, I would agree with you all, it's a, it's a really tough decision, 'cause there's definitely lots of deserving people out there that do the good work of the people. But as far as what we've experienced, in our, our lens on working with the zoning commission, working with the Board of Adjustment, and looking at these very big issues that face the public, I'm, I'm very privileged to have a partner in that, that respective office that helps us fulfill these respective duties. And I can't go on enough to say that, you know, rural ad dressing, et cetera, I could break down and analyze the, the, the quality of work that is performed in that regard. But, yeah, I, I fully understand, but I just wanted to say that, and it's, it's good to point that out sometimes with our great employees.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, if Don's listening, we appreciate her. She does a great job. So, Don, we love you.
Last thing I'd say, and I don't know how political Lonnie gets back there, but there's no group that representatives or senators love to pander more to on the campaign trail than veterans and farmers. So, maybe, I mean, to pick up the phone and say, we got some good people in Woodbury County that wanna know why they can't be funded to do an even better job for our veterans.
Good point.
Why are you cutting our funding? And if you wanna do, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not putting you on the spot, but I'm just saying, they love to say, oh, we, we support our veterans, and then they go and do stuff like this.
Yeah.
They could show it, they could show it a little better, couldn't they?
Okay, alright, well, here are no other further motions to approve anything. I want to say thank you all for coming, and the officials and department heads. Thanks, Vice Chair said it well. We can always come back and address some of these later. We can see where we're at this next year. But right now, that's where we were at with the budget, and I think I've said it before, right, it doesn't reflect that our, you're not deserving, that we don't care. It's just we have to look at our supervisor rules as making those financial decisions, and so, right now, that's where we're at, so. Alright, any other comments with that or anything?
Mr. Chair, just in regards to the motion to put those back in the budget, my understanding is this is purely for the budget, for the figures within the budget, so we'll still need down the road deauthorization and authorizations of the positions so that we have clear record of the payroll.
Okay, alright. Alright, I'll get that on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Next up is just, is just Item B's miscellaneous review of the funds, just some updates we have. Today, we, myself and Vice Chairman Nelson, we had a, just a work session with some of our elected officials and department heads, just, just a discussion only, just to look at, where, is there any, you know, creative ideas to help us in this kinda budget crunch? And out of that is where we were able to look at potentially finding about 500,000 potentially in unspent funds for fiscal year '25, and I wanna say I appreciate all of our elected officials, department heads for coming. I think it was very productive, and just good getting us all around same, same table and same ideas. So, thank you for everyone that's here. Many of you were here today in the room, and so thank you for that. With that, I know we had talked about a few things regarding the budget. The first was the health premium payment. We've talked about that. And Melissa, do you wanna come speak to that for a moment? Do you care? I know, I mean, I put you on the spot, but just to kinda, just give everyone and the, and the board members that weren't there, just, we've talked about potentially just raising the...
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director, and we are, we are looking at, at that potential.
Potentially, yeah.
Yes, because, you know, obviously, you know, pharmacy and admin fees and medical fees, everything has increased. So, with that said, I mean, the employer has increased their, their share, so we're gonna have to take a look at what our medical plan's gonna, you know, in the future, so.
Right, and part of that reason we discussed was, you know, one of the great benefits of being a county employee are the benefits.
Right.
And we, our insurance plan is very, very affordable. And I know Mark and I had just talked about, you know, it's just the private sector outside of, outside of the government, it's, it's a lot higher, right? And so, this is, if we increase a little more, even our increase will still be a very great savings on the family insurance plan.
Exactly, and we're doing the best we can to keep our benefits
Correct.
Package good, so we can also recruit when we need to, you know, good employees, so.
Right.
Everybody's just working real hard to figure out how to make sure that our funding is good going forward.
Right, and that increase will help us not have to, in essence, we'll open up levy, levy space and other budget space rights, we can help bring the deficit down, yeah.
Exactly.
Correct, okay. Thank you, Melissa. Alright. With that, we also talked about, today for the board, talked about some may potentially hiring freeze, and so, Mark, do you wanna just give us an update on that? Do you mind, I knew you had the numbers there.
Yeah, so we, we went around the table and, with our department heads and elected officials, and, and had asked, you know, what openings they had currently in their, within their departments, and we had some that had gotten, you know, really good applicants recently, some that they had given offers to, some that are gonna be needed, like, for example, custodial staff, maintenance staff out at the jail in order to facilitate all those inmates out there. And so, we had talked about, you know, hiring freeze, but it's not gonna be doable on all of the open positions that we have currently, because some of those we, we have to have, but there are a few that we could freeze, say a half dozen of those 17, and that could result in, you know, a half million plus in, in savings out of this budget, which would carve that, you know, if we have a half thousand from reserves that we've found, now that 1.8's down to 1.3, if we have another half thousand from a freeze, now we're down to 800,000, we're getting a lot closer.
Right.
I don't wanna see, I believe that most of our departments are running with personnel to just kind of barely get the job done. I don't think we have fluff in any department. So, if this is something we can do, and that avoids us having to actually fire, deauthorize a position, I think that's the way to go.
Right.
We talked about that we wouldn't deauthorize it, that we would just defund it.
Defund, yeah.
And then if we find ourselves in a different situation next year, we could
Right.
Give that money back and, and get that person, but it's a very, it's a very tough thing to do, but this is all part of it, so.
So, we're working on those just for the board, so for next week, we're look, I'll send an email out to our, the department heads and elected officials that were there, just to, just to confirm if we were to freeze these positions, what would that, what, what's that dollar amount? And then we'll, I'll ask Michelle to add that in to the projections and the deficit to see what, where that would put us. One thing that's interesting, thank you, and Ryan gave us this information, out of, out of our general basic fund, 65% is payroll. And out of that breakdown, 65% of it's payroll, 46% is wages, 14.9% is benefits, and 3.4% is payroll taxes. And what we kinda discussed today, most of our departments is payroll. And what we kind of discussed today, most of our departments is payroll, and it's not bloated, right, it's not bloated payroll, it's just for that department size, it's just it's the people that are there to run and do a great job of serving our citizens, so.
And then the rest of it, like Matthew said earlier, is utilities and fuel and things that we don't, insurance, insurance. And Melissa's nodderhead, insurance, you know, work comp, you know, cybersecurity, those are things that we have no control, you know, cost of repairs for Kenny, whether it's even just materials. We have no control over that, so. It's, I don't think some of these folks understand really how a lot of this stuff functions, but.
Yeah.
I'll give them a pass.
Yeah.
Maybe they do.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So, on these unspent funds, is this predominantly these related to this hiring freeze? Or?
No.
Some of these, some of the five hundred thousand potential?
And it would be in addition to.
Addition to?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're keeping in mind that if there's unspent funds we're, we're deauthorizing, we also have to keep in mind we could overspend in different line items in the first sixty days of the fiscal year, which I think is when we don't receive
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
any income, so we don't want checks to bounce, because we've had corresponding increases in other areas.
Right.
Yeah, we can use, you're right, Matthew, we can use reserves, but only to an extent, because we have to have enough to, to pay the bills.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we're keeping that in consideration, looking at that with Otter Skaas, and done great with that, making sure of balancing that. So, the only thing I have for tonight for the budget, just miscellaneous review, next week we'll have an updated projections, and is that we talked today about, you know, the max tax levy, so we know in general supplemental, and rural supplemental, we can, we can increase the levies. I know that the board has, we've kept those flat for, for a while, for ten years. And I know our, our goal usually is to keep it flat, but in light of this new property tax reform, it seems to be like what Michelle testified to, and Mark from talking to people, and what I learned last week, it seems like this is gonna go forward, and we'll have a cap. We might want to look at increasing the levy.
In general sup-
In general supplemental, increasing that levy, so if they're gonna cap us and give us a growth cap, we might as well, let's increase, increase that levy to get us at a high, at a higher rate. And so, that's something to consider, we don't have to vote on it tonight, but we can, we can think about it this week, and get with Ryan, and Ryan may give us some projections on that, and maybe next week, look at that, do we want to raise the levy? And Michelle, do you have any thoughts on this from our meeting, I mean, if we raise the levy to the max, we could cover the seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar, from my understanding, that, that deficit, we could cover that by raising the levy, I know we haven't done it in years, but I, you know, as we get, we've got new information, and if this property tax, like I said, this property tax reform's gonna go through, we might want to do it, now, I know that may not go well with a lot of people, but we have to look at what is, what's best long-term for us, and looking at maybe the two or three-year projections out for the budget, but, yeah, Michelle, what do you?
If, if the levy were raised in general supplemental, you could get rid of the deficit there. If you had a higher total levy, if you add up the rural basic and the rural supplemental, you could balance the budget in the rural basic, and the rural supplemental would have a little surplus, because there is more FICA and IFRS that can be moved to rural supplemental. So, those three funds could be balanced, or build a little bit of reserve in those, there's not a lot you can do about the general basic. I had mentioned that if you wanted to shift some of the general basic to general supplemental, half of my pay could be moved to general supplemental, which could then be levy.
Correct. I know we, we ran the numbers today, do you, do you have that My House evaluation, that, that chart, could you put that up? We ran the numbers on, just even for like, what My House is valued at, if we were to increase the levy to the max for general supplemental, what the increase would be, I believe it was, I'll let you get that up, I think it was like thirty dollars, just for the county's portion, it's just one tax and authority, so we'll be clear, and I know, I think it was very well said today, no one wants more taxes, however, if we can explain and show what's behind this, and what's the reasoning for this, and communicate very clearly to the taxpayer that we've, we've done well for ten years, and you know, we've, we've tried to run very lean budgets, be wise stewards of the money, and there's been a benefit, but now, with inflation, cost of goods, there, you know, if we don't do this, there, there could be significant services that are cut to the public. And so, so, yeah, so, yeah, Michelle, if it's two twenty-five.
And that's your one hundred percent assessed value, correct?
Yeah, roughly, yeah, off the top of my head, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, if you can see on the screen there, just, this is My House, it'd be a twenty-nine dollar increase, the county portion. Which, I mean.
That's the max levy, which includes all of the improvement requests and all of the, a lot of things, there's been reductions since then, so that'll actually be a little bit less, once all of that is taken into consideration.
Yeah. So, I would just offer to the board, it's something to maybe potentially think about for this week, and let's come back next week and, you know, discuss that, and you know, I, I think we don't want to eat into reserves anymore, we know our reserves are getting low, and Michelle, you said that we, Woodbury County now has the lowest reserve out of all the counties in Iowa, correct? Roughly, is.
Roughly, yes, I know it's out of the top counties, for sure, we're the lowest by far.
Right.
That is at the end of our financial reporting period.
Correct, right, and that's, I don't know about you, I mean, for me, it's a little concerning, I don't want us to be the lowest, but.
Yeah, some of these counties have been taxing like crazy, just inflate their reserves, you know, but, but, yeah, I mean, we're, we can't go lower.
No. So. So, that's what I had tonight for the budget review, if anybody has anything else, or any questions?
If we adjust the employee contribution on the healthcare, that's general supplemental?
It's every fund.
Okay.
It depends on what that employee.
Sure, okay, I understand.
And we transfer, technically, we do transfer those funds from general basic to general supplemental, so
Sure.
that's affected, and and then, now we're gonna start doing that from rural basic to rural supplemental.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you, Otter Skaas for working hard on this stuff, and Ryan gets the information, next week we'll have some updated numbers, and after the auditor, we'll give her some updates and factors in these things, so if nobody has any other concerns, we'll move on, questions? Alright, let's move on to Item fourteen, reports on committee meetings, are there any reports on committee meetings, for anyone?
I went to the Veterans Affairs Committee meeting just recently. There was just a discussion and cover of costs for a funeral for twenty-six hundred dollars, and also, there's a town hall event coming up April fourth, and that'll be at the Sioux City Armory. So, just wanted to pass that on, so.
You said April fourth, is there a time on that?
April fourth at eleven AM.
Okay.
There's another one coming up, Ben Charter Oak on April seventh, but I think we're, we'll be probably attending the one here in Sioux City, so.
Gotcha, okay. Alright, anybody else, any reports on committee meetings?
I was out the last ten days or so, but we had Soil Water Conservation Board meeting this morning, and they're still kind of waiting to hear if we're gonna fund that fifty-three thousand for their watershed tech, so they're still hoping for that. They've got a lot of work going on, a lot of these water structures, the good news is that some of these bids on some of these projects are coming in lower than they had expected, and it seems that there's contractors hungry for work, so hopefully, we see that with secondary roads, Laura. Yeah?
Okay.
Yeah. So, anyway, well, that would be a great thing, but Conservation Board on Thursday, so, talk about that next week.
Alright, I'll get with you about the watershed technician. Talk about that for next week, to bring that back. Okay, yeah, Matthew?
WCICC meeting, honestly, aside from discussion of everything going great as usual with that department, found out the city, you know, heard from city reps about their hiring freeze and what they're going through, so it's just as grim over there.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Alright. I had none, no committee meetings. Alright, any citizen concerns? Alright. Seeing none, we'll keep moving on, sixteen board concerns. Yeah, as I stated earlier, yeah, Matthew, thank for that question, yeah, I went to Des Moines last week, talked with our legislators, and yeah, it was not a was not a, was not a pleasant hopeful anticipation of getting any traction, but a few of them did listen, and I would say, some other ones that are outside, like I said, of our delegation heard our concerns, but it doesn't seem like they're, they're gonna do anything, or. But, um, but I will be going back in two weeks again, to meet with them again, and meet with some others, so I'll keep you guys abreast of that, so, but that's all that I have for board concerns, well, that part. Secondly, I know tomorrow's a snowstorm coming in, but for those that are watching, Melissa and I are watching the weather, so we will let you know, county employees, so. I know some people always ask that, but it's, we're watching for the blizzard. So, but, um, that's all that I have for board concerns, anyone else have a board concerns?
Well, I'm a little concerned that I don't see a plaque back here for me, I remember when Supervisor Ung got off of Grant Township, which was a very prestigious honor, he was awarded a plaque, and, you know, I was part of the first-place trivia team at the Mobile Economic Development Trivia Night Saturday night. And this is an incredible feat, I mean, you've got twenty-two teams, tables of eight, smartest people in Woodbury County. And I come out on top, you know, and I don't see a plaque, so I'm a little disappointed in you guys, you know?
Man, we tell you, bro.
Grant Township greater than trivia night. I think that's ridiculous. But anyway, it's a great night, it's a fundraiser that, it's McDy, is the group, and so they fundraise, and they use that for their economic development projects, and they've been doing, I think this is the fifth or sixth year that they've done that trivia night, and it's a lot of fun, and it's all St. Patrick theme, but we've, we've competed every year, and I say competed, because we've done well, but we've never cracked that top spot, but we did this year, so. I challenge you to come to trivia night next year, Chairman, or Supervisor.
Not still Grant Township Chair, I'd love you to, some serious tariffs on you.
Well, Kedron Township, we're gonna build a wall, keep you out, so, bring it on.
Oh, boy, that's good.
We gotta end on a lighthearted note.
That's right, we got to, that's right, alright, anything else for the good of the cause? Alright, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, for.